See, the camera came on. Nine thirty, I'll call the meeting to order, special budget meeting, and let's get right to work. Motion, approval of the agenda, Counselor Peterson. Deputy Warden Peterson.
For a little bit. Thank you, Warden. Moved by Peterson, seconded by Counselor, may be resolved that agenda be approved.
Is there any discussion? Holes in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Counselor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Gilvezzi. Resolve that section eleven point three point one of the procedure bylaw, which reads presentations by county staff at means shall endeavor to be a maximum of fifteen minutes be way for the purpose of budget and business plan deliberations.
Is there any discussion? Holes in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Counselor Gilvezzi.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin. Resolve that the motion to adjourn the special meeting of November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four, be extended to two thirty P M.
Is there any discussion? Holes in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Having adopted the agenda, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Not seeing any. No adoption of the minutes of previous meeting, no public meetings, delegations, presentations, and consideration thereof, six point one staff presentations regarding the two thousand and twenty five business plans and budgets. So I think remaining budget presentations of departments, C A O, paramedic services, and planning, so I will turn it over to C A O adly, and largely let staff take it from here.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone, to this second special meeting for the two thousand and twenty five draft business plan and budget with Counsel this morning. So just taking a look at the slide presentation, what we're going to cover today, we're starting out, we're going to be looking at some new information, we're going to be looking at grant submissions that we're proposing to include in the two thousand and twenty five budget. We're going to resume with business plan and budget review by departments, and we're down to the C A O, paramedic services, and community planning. And we'll take a brief look at the summary, some of what you've already seen, and we will look at the updated pending budget adjustments and the decision points that Counsel will be asked to make at their December eleventh meeting. So just taking a look at the budget highlights, I'll just remind you that incorporate in the two thousand and twenty five draft business plan and budget, there are one hundred and nineteen initiatives that support the strategic plan, ninety-five of which are included in the business plan goals and objectives, eight are new initiatives identified through seven new initiative reports, and sixteen F T E requests that specifically address promoting community vitality and fostering progressive government. So taking a look at the budget from a high-level perspective, the county has three levies that require funding from the taxpayers in the, in the County of Oxford, as well as we have a rates budget and a capital budget. The capital budget is included in the rates and the taxation levies as well. So just taking a look at the levy budget, so that's the dark blue bar across the top of that chart, and then down in the middle of the chart, so just starting to take a look at the general levy, this year we're seeking ninety-three million dollars from taxation, and from a library perspective, five point seven million, and for the court security special grant, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. All in, that's, that's a total sum of ninety-eight point eight million dollars, or eleven million dollar increase over last year. So that's the amount that would be collected from all of the area residents and property owners, with the exception of the library and the court security special grant are not collected from residents within and business owners within the city of Woodstock, because those when the city has their own library system, as well as the court security grant is intended to offset a portion of the Woodstock Police Services court security-related expenses. So taking a look at that percentage increases, you can see that the general levy is increasing twelve point six percent, whereas the levy, library levy is increasing ten percent, and court security forty-eight point eight percent, and all that, although that sounds like a significant percentage change, it is small in, in numbers. So in total, collectively, that is a twelve point five percent increase in the levy requirement year over year. In terms of how that translates into affecting the taxpayers, so from an average residential property owner perspective, the general levy is a ten point three percent increase, library seven point nine, and court security a forty-six percent increase over last year. So all in, that is a ten point one percent increase year over year for all of the businesses and residential property owners. That's a collective number, so that includes the library and court security grant across the county. Now that is subject to change, of course, as we work through the budget adjustments that are coming forth during this process, as well as any notices of motion that will be considered at the December eleventh meeting. Similarly, the rates budget, we're looking at requiring forty-eight point three million dollars in rate revenue for two thousand and twenty-five, and this includes water and wastewater only. That is a three point six million dollar increase year over year, and it translates into eight point eight percent increase year over year. In terms of how that impacts the average residential household, that is, build approximately one hundred and fifty cubic meters on average in a, in a year, it is an increase anywhere from two point nine percent to fourteen point three percent, depending on which system they're serviced by. Again, there's more details in the budget binder in that regard. And then the capital budget, as I mentioned, is spread between the levies and the rates budgets, is one hundred and thirty-one million dollars for two thousand and twenty-five. Looking at the next slide, this illustrates how the debenture, or, sorry, the expenditure distribution is amongst the services. You can see water and wastewater are largely the highest, at twenty-nine percent of the total requirements, followed by roads at sixteen percent, and Woodingford Lodge and Child Care and Early On coming in at ten percent each. The residuals are, services are shown there at their percentages, facilities at two percent, library two percent, community paramedicine at one percent, and, and more. So taking a look at the next slide, how we're funding the budget this year, so the greatest contribution to the, the revenues required to cover the total expenditures is coming from grants and government transfers, that's twenty-six point four percent, followed closely there, too, by property taxes at twenty-three point four percent. Reserves come in at twenty-one point one percent, and user fees and charges at twenty point six percent. The remaining is made up of development charges at six point two percent, debentures at one point two percent, and other income from other sources such as benefiting property owners and interest income at point nine percent. Taking a look at the draft budget impacts, you can see the levy and the rates increase in the top black bar there, rates coming in at three point nine million dollars, taxation at ten point nine million, and the taxation increase, as mentioned before, twelve point five percent increase. So then if we take that increase and we back out the new initiatives that are in the two thousand and twenty-five draft business plan and budget, one-time items, service level increases, capital contributions, initiative gapping, any in-year approvals or carryforwards from two thousand and twenty-four, and major capital infrastructure, that brings us down to budget impacts, and then we've identified three other areas that do impact the budget in two thousand and twenty-five, so prior year non-recurring items, and prior year initiative gapping, and then the development charge exemptions. So once those are backed out, you can see that the base budget increase for rates is, is then mitigated to three point five million, and the taxation down to two point two million, or two point six percent over last year. Taking a look at the new information, we do have a notice of motion on the agenda, and that's in respect to those non-statutory exemptions to be removed from the industrial development-related class. We have two reports that were addressed in closed session at Counsel's November the thirteenth meeting that have budget impacts, and they're shown there as well as number two and three on that slide. Looking at the next slide, then, we have now received all four of the conservation authority draft budgets for two thousand and twenty-five, and based on the three percent year-over-year increase we had incorporated in the two thousand and twenty-five budget, we're reflecting here the difference between what that would be and what their draft budget is presented as. And then the item eight, the very last item on the list, we've recently been informed by the town of Tilsonburg that a project, a capital project that we were planning in two thousand and twenty-four with respect to a road, roadworks that they were undertaking that would require water and wastewater updates is going to be deferred. So we're removing that, so there's no levy impact, it's just a matter of taking it out of the budget for two thousand and twenty-five. So once all of those changes are reflected, we're then decreasing that levy change from ten million to seven point one million, or an eight point seven percent change over last year. In terms of grant submissions, Counsel had asked for a list of all of those that had applied under the county's new grant program. You will see that there are sixteen in total, and you can see their names and a brief description or a title that they've provided for their program or service that they're asking Counsel to support. We've also identified the strategic plan alignment that they've identified as applicable in their application and their requested amount. So just to remind Counsel, along the very top bar there, we've illustrated how much is in the, in the budget right now, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's in line with prior years. And the, out of those sixteen, the review and approval committee has taken a look at them and has determined that there are three out of the sixteen that actually do align with the strategic plan or, and/or the Safe and Well Plan. And so we're recommending out of that, out of the five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar contribution or applications, that we fund one hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred. So just to give you a little bit of refresher on, on the grant program, the grant applications have been assessed in accordance with the grant policies' decision-making criteria, with emphasis on initiative outcomes that will have a direct and indirect community economic benefit, enhanced quality of life, or community wellness, will achieve programming or operational efficiencies, foster community collaboration and/or partnerships directly related to the program or event, with a view to achieving identifiable results supported by measurable indicators. So more specifically, we were looking for alignment with the Safe and Well Oxford Plan and/or the county's strategic plan. We're also looking for sustainability, looking for presentation in a business plan that would enable the program to continue to operate into the future without reliance on the grants program. We are also looking at introducing of new programs or initiatives that are not currently or sufficiently supported in the community as opposed to already established programs, broadly available to and impact a large number of people within our targeted groups as identified in the Safe and Well Oxford Plan and within the Oxford County community. So that was the basis for coming up with those determinations, and as a reminder, Counsel had asked us to formulate a grant program that would allow staff clear direction in terms of how to make assessments and determinations for the allocation of the funds. So this is a representation or presentation from staff in regards to our recommendations, what will be approved out of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant provision in the budget, that one hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred be awarded. So that ends my initial comments and leading into the department presentations here this morning. Thank you.
Back to you. Questions so far?
Okay, we'll start off the staff presentations with the C A O office today for Counsel. The C A O budget can be found on page two seventy-six of your budget package is where that starts. The C A O's office is obviously a small portion of the county budget, it is about a, less than one percent of the overall spending for the county in expenses, makes up approximately two point five million of the overall levy expense for two thousand and twenty-five. Divisions within the C A O's office, we have done a little bit of a reorganization in the department by separating off the strategic initiatives as its own division, similarly the tourism division, strategic communication and engagement division, and then obviously along with the administration side of the C A O office. The department as a whole has a budget F T E request of fourteen point four F T Es for two thousand and twenty-five, and as inclusive of some additional one point, one F T E increase for two thousand and twenty-five that we'll get to under the specific divisions themselves. Next slide. So under the administration side of the C A O's office department, obviously some key goals of the C A O administration is to support workforce culture and development, strategic commitments of Counsel and the county to make sure that we progress on those, continuous quality improvement across the entire organization, making sure that we facilitate and support that as the C A O and senior leadership team, and ongoing relationship building at all levels, whether that is senior levels of government, local area municipality, and other stakeholders. You'll see from the C A O's budget, the administration side is approximately a six point nine percent increase on the budget for two thousand and twenty-five. This is mostly related to salaries and wages for some step increases, as well as cost of living, annual cost of living increase costs, and then interdepartmental charges. Otherwise, the, the C A O's office itself remains fairly stacked with, just continuing with the two F T E positions that exist this year. Next slide. The strategic initiatives division, as I mentioned, has, we've kind of separated that off where Counsel's vision for budgetary purposes, so we can see that section on its own in the work that they are attempting to achieve in their goals for two thousand and twenty-five and ongoing. Obviously, the components of the strategic initiative division are managing and moving forward those goals of the strategic plan of Counsel, and then also the advocacy and intergovernmental relations. In our two thousand and twenty-five budget goals, continuing to develop in climate action plan and bring forward to Counsel in two thousand and twenty-five what that will look like in our, our path forward for community environmental sustainability, continuing to work both with community and internally on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, as I mentioned, both internal and community-facing, continuing to move forward our Safe and Well Oxford, the leadership of that at the, the steering committee level, as well as to facilitate the coalitions of the Safe and Well Plan. Continuing with advocacy to our other government partners to ensure that we can get funding where available for projects that we move forward, and then obviously management of the strategic plan itself. In the division, you'll notice there's salaries and wages again are a significant driver in the division. We did have a, one position that was gapped for only half a year last year, so now we have the impact of that for a full-time, for a full year in two thousand and twenty-five, and then obviously, again, things like step increases and cost of living increase for two thousand and twenty-five. Two other big projects that are driving the budget increase, and you'll notice the one hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenues, this is to go towards, like I said, two major initiatives, and one of those, both of them basically falling under the Community Safe and Well Plan, but one of those being to develop and implement an indigenous consultation plan, which is one of the goals of the strategic plan that staff are, are looking forward to, starting to move forward on that, and addressing the recommendations of the truth and reconciliation panel. Additionally to that is the update to the Community Safe and Well Plan. So as Counsel may remember, this was mandated to the area municipalities to develop community Safe and Well Plans. We are at the mandatory refresh of that for a five years, unbelievable that we're, we're there, but to have to do that update. So we have put in the budget for county staff to support the area municipalities in developing that, based on the resolutions that were passed previously by each area municipality and county council for county staff to take on the Safe and Well Plan on their behalf. Both of these projects are currently marked as being funded through other revenues. We have had positive engagement with the Ministry of the Solicitor General's Office, and believe that there are opportunities that we can achieve some grant funding to support both of these initiatives going forward. If that does fail, though, we will obviously then have to come back to Counsel with an alternate funding method for these projects if we are not able to secure those grants. Next slide. Next division is our tourism department. So again, a, a small, but, you know, very productive and functional group inside of the C A O's office. So in two thousand and twenty-five, they'll continue to develop surveys and report measures and monitoring of tourism-related data. I think we saw a very good sample of that in what is possible for us to gather data on and, and report back on tourism-related things through the five-year plan that was brought forward to Counsel earlier this year. They'll continue to be investigating new partnerships, but specifically at the Canadian Outdoor Farm Show, to have a more active presence and, and role in the farm show itself. Complete the implementation of the, the new initiative of two thousand and twenty-four, the Your Next Stop, which is kind of the next phase in trying to develop ongoing tourism from stop to stop, and this is where one location will advertise for a next, so when visitors come to one, they'll actually get advertisement or pushed to go to another. So very similar to when development of the Cheese Trail, to, to keep people in the, in the community as they visit. To develop a new visitor, friends and family ambassador program, and then to also improve communication with businesses, residents, and consumers on sustainable tourism, which has been a, a goal of the last few years. So again, continuing to implement strategies as laid out in the five-year plan from earlier this year. The tourism department has a very modest one point six percent increase on the levy for two thousand and twenty-five. Inside of that, there is a F T E change request, it does have an impact of point one overall. This is to take a current student position from a point three to actually have a ongoing part-time tourism clerk for point four of a position. So it'll be all year, but only a part-time position. Staff, unfortunately, the last few years have felt that the student role did not bring the impact that we hoped it would as far as productivity, and including the fact that even maintaining that position throughout a summer has been difficult the last two years. So feel that actually implementing a part-time position would bring us more benefit there. Next slide. Last division in the C A O's office is strategic communications and engagement, and I think we can all appreciate and understand the work of the communications department. They'll be continuing to update their communication and engagement strategy. We also, you know, realize that communication is not the same now as what it was in the past. There's much more reliance on things like social media, graphic design, it's more imagery-based than word-based, you can't just put out a long, full descriptive documents and expect to get our message across. So certainly So, certainly has been a focused change in the last few years to strengthen in those areas. There's a plan to develop an annual communication and engagement update for council. And an obvious to enhance construction and capital project-related communication. As all of those projects and capital work have increased, there's been an increasing demand certainly on the communications department to make sure that we stay relevant and in advance of those projects before the community and make sure that they are aware of them and well timed. So, we have seen that there have been some problems with doing that. So, there has been a FTE request in the budget for one FTE for a communication officer position. And like I said, that is to support the increased workload and demands that have been created from the additional, like I said, capital and construction projects for the most part. So, the budget drivers mainly in the strategic communication engagement, again, salaries and wages. There's that FTE position, obviously. But along with that, there's a gapping of a position that was only part year in 2024. So, now it's expected for full year funding in 2025 along with the other cost of living and step increases that are applicable. Next slide. Very minor capital in the CAO's office, just a $2,000 for a computer for the communication officer of the FTE position. And that FTE position can be found on page 295 for council's reference. And like I said, so no ongoing capital, just the implementation for the position itself. So, that's it for the CAO's office.
Questions from council? Council, Paul.
Thank you, Warden. Question to the CAO. Does the new communications officer, does any of that impact the ability of the county to react to problems in townships? A request for townships from you?
Through you, Warden. Our communications department has been very open to supporting all of the area municipalities in crisis situations and have been doing it ad hoc for quite a while. It's our intent that they would continue on with that. Certainly, like I said, on an ad hoc basis and in, you know, situational awareness, they would continue to provide that support. If any municipality wanted to have a more dedicated communication resource, we would certainly be willing to sit down and, and cost that out and figure out what that would look like for them as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Gauvazi.
Thank you, through you, Warden. How many people are in the communications department? And did we add last year to the communications department?
Through you, Warden. There, the, with the new FTE request for this year, there would be six in total. There's five currently, and one of those was an add for a graphic design position last year. So, we did in 2024, specific for that designer-type work. And then this position is for a communication officer this year.
Sorry, I just didn't hear the last part.
So, the, sorry, the, the position for this year is a communications officer, so more generalized communication needs, not specific to the graphic design work from last year.
Microphones off.
Through you, Warden. There was contracted services. The budget was for $65,000, but there were actual contracted, or the forecast is for $400,000. I was wondering what that was for.
Through you, Warden. So, that was some specific project work that was endorsed by council. If we wanted to go into the details of it, we'd have to go to closed session.
Thank you.
Any other questions on CAO? I have one. I know there's a line item in here on Safe and Well Oxford and updating the plan. SI, Safe and Well Oxford Plan Update, $80,000. And I know that it's administratively more efficient if the county simply, you know, taxes that on the levy and collects those funds and administers it. But I'm wondering, would there be the ability? So, this is just a question. Would there be the ability for the county to arrange with the area municipalities that they fund that either, either $10,000 each or on a per capita or some combination of those two, and that the area municipalities fund that cost of that plan? Is that, is that a, is that a thing that could be worked out?
Yeah, to your question. The initial development of the Safe and Well Plan was funded by each area municipality. Each area municipality contributed $10,000, I believe. And that was what was utilized to develop the plan initially. So, that methodology has been used in the past, obviously. For this year's budget, again, we are hoping that that $80,000 can be provided by grant if we are successful. And I would suggest that if, if successful to get the grant, then it would be benefit to us and all area municipalities. Should we not get that grant funding, as I mentioned, we would probably have to come back to council for what would that alternative funding look like to, to keep going with the Safe and Well update?
So, just to follow up a question, then, the, the $80,000 in there is proposed now as part of the levy, though, correct?
No, it's not.
Thank you. Any other questions on CAO? All right.
Cool. I guess I'm up next.
Chief Hall.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Paramedic service budget starts on page 299 of your budget package. Our 2025 budget goals include the completion of our 10-year master plan, the continued modernization of the county emergency management program, and working with our local healthcare community to deliver really good, efficient, and integrated services to the residents of Oxford County. Our master plan will address how we can manage our substantial growth over the coming years and what we've experienced in the past by evaluating our existing stations, looking at potential additional stations, alternative deployment models, and what staff growth is going to look like. We aim to have a preliminary report ready by the end of Q1 2025. The 2025 budget request provides the resources to meet our service delivery commitments, namely, the land ambulance response time performance targets and our emergency management legislative requirements. To support our service delivery commitments, we're asking for an additional 4,380 ambulance hours or what equates to four FTEs for frontline paramedics. As we discussed with the 2025 Response Time Performance Plan, significant call volume growth has driven the need for additional ambulance staffing hours. We'll be looking to add these hours in Woodstock, which will help improve the overall system response times, response time performance, sorry, but also help keep the rural-based ambulances in their home location more often. Again, and thereby improving rural response times, performance. For this year, so for 2025, we're able to accommodate additional administrative burden of the additional staff complement within our existing administrative resources. Other line item increases in our operating budget are related to either call volume growth, such as medical supplies and fuel, number of staff on hand, or vendors increasing prices for services. Next slide, please. Under capital plan, the equipment replacement cost is driven by two main projects. The replacement of our power stretcher and power loader systems and the Zolda Fibrillator Autopulse Systems, which we, that procurement we started some months ago. The vehicle capital costs are driven by regularly planned replacement of two vehicles that were scheduled to be replaced in 2025. There's a 14- to 16-month lead time on ambulances these days. So, we are pre-ordering our 2026 ambulances to get us back on track. We currently have seven, ambulances for seven years, and one, I believe, is into its eighth year, which is in the shop a lot more than we'd like it to be and decreases the reliability of those vehicles. And so, we're also waiting for, anticipating the delivery of our 2024 purchases in April or May of 2025. So, all those vehicle costs are kind of shown in the 2025 budget. The additional ambulance hours we are requesting will not require a net new ambulance as we're going to kind of take an existing day shift and add these hours onto that. So, it'll utilize the same vehicle, not require a net new ambulance into the fleet. Next slide. Community paramedicine. This program 100% funded by the Ministry of Long-Term Care and Ontario Health. In 2023, our CP program provided service to 623 distinct patients. Our program focuses on the spectrum of chronic disease from remote monitoring and symptom management of moderate to severe cases all the way through to as they become palliative, in our palliative care and outreach programs. We also partner with and continue to explore opportunities to collaborate with Warden for Lodge, Human Services, Southwest Public Health, and other Oxford OHT partners. And I'm happy to answer or speak to anything further, answer any questions if council has any.
Questions from council on paramedic services? Counselor Accioni.
Yeah, through the Warden to Mr. Hall. Thank you so much, actually. As Director, I think you answered my question that I had written down earlier. I'm assuming because another ambulance isn't required, even though we're adding more, is that why no DC charges are being used for 2025?
That's a great question for my finance partners, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, so through the Warden, the DC charges are applied based on new projects. And if we're not adding an ambulance next year, the growth isn't specific to, to that capital. So, that would be in a future year when we do have that.
Again, as I assume then. Okay, still, thank you. Counselor Maber.
Just curious, you're asking for 4,380, I think, extra hours, but four employees. So, are these four half-time employees or four full-time employees? Noting that 1,095 hours, if you divide it by four, doesn't actually make a full-time employee.
Yes, so ambulance hours, not staffing hours. So, one ambulance hour is actually two hours of paramedic staffing for every ambulance hour, if that makes sense. So, and that's just the way it looks on our budget. The ambulance hours equals two staffing hours.
So, if I, if I may, Warden, what you're saying is that about half the time they're in the ambulance, the other half the time they're doing other things, like?
No, because one ambulance hour is staffed by two people.
Oh, okay. That makes sense. All right. I was, I was thinking of four employees and 4,000 hours didn't quite make it. So, thanks very much. Appreciate that.
Any other questions on paramedic services? Not seeing any. No, sorry. Director Michaels, planning.
Thank you, Warden. So, just to run through the community planning budget, which is on 322 of your budget package. The CP budget represents a small share of the overall county budget. Of the 4.5 million CP budget, a little over half of that comes from the levy. The only planning services that are not on the levy are major studies and projects, which are financed by development charges and OP reserves, and then the review of development applications, which are recovered through fees. The county only collects fees for county applications, so that's subdivisions, official plan amendments, condos, and consent. The fees for local applications are collected locally. So, we recover the costs of county planning application fees through our, or the cost of planning, providing service for county planning applications through our fees. But the, the, the costs of the planning service for local applications are really recovered locally through your fees. So, it doesn't show up necessarily on our budget, but it does help to offset the costs of that, that planning service. We did review our fees for county applications this past year. So, there'll be a significant 2025 fee increase. That will substantially help our, our bottom line going forward. They're now more of a cost recovery fee schedule for county applications. Next slide. The 2025 budget goals will address a number of key provincial and county priorities. And those are set out in both in the strategic plan and through council's direction on a number of community planning reports that were brought forward over this past year relating to updates to the environmental policies and increased heightened density. So, some of those priorities are increasing housing supply, planning for growth and infrastructure, and updating the environmental policies. Some of the projects that are listed here are carried forward from the 2024 business plan, and those are largely due to the delay in the release of the PPS, which was expected early in 2024, April, but didn't end up being released until October. So, there's roughly $1 million earmarked for the various projects in the county, our community planning budget for 2025. But those are all funded from DC and OP reserves, so no levy impacts from those. Some of the key initiatives for 2025 include official plan review, which will be wrapping up in 2025. That's got a couple of priority items in it relating to at least initial changes to facilitate increased density intensification opportunities, and then updating our environmental policies. Like I said, those were ones we were able to initiate without seeing the new provincial planning statement policies because we knew they weren't, wouldn't change much. So, the work being accomplished as part of that will help to streamline the, the new OP project, which all should be initiated this year. Terms of planning for growth, we'll be completing our growth forecast and land need analysis updates early in 2025. And the first report on that was brought forward to council at their last regular meeting. We'll also be initiating any secondary planning and other studies that are necessary to plan for the growth that was, that will be identified through that updated land need analysis. And that's in partnership with the area municipalities. So, timing on those projects can vary depending on when the area municipalities are either ready to move or have negotiated boundary adjustments and those types of things. But we have earmarked funds for those studies to be completed. Planning for infrastructure, we'll be working with public works to update the servicing allocation protocol and associated phasing policies to make sure we're making efficient use of our infrastructure going forward. As I mentioned, development of a new official plan. So, this will be a major multi-year project, which we will be initiating in 2025. It will be a significant staff resource commitment, but that, those staffing resources were provided through the budget updates last year. So, that's appreciated and will give us the, the complement we need. And then we will be working with the area municipalities to update their zoning bylaws and their development review processes to kind of streamline both the development review processes and, and the provisions in the bylaw to, again, facilitate increased density and intensification. Just make sure there's no impediments there to, to growth that are unnecessary. In terms of the budget variance, we have a $512,000 increase in expenses. This is largely due to increased salary and benefit costs, and then to some extent, increased consulting costs. But those are, again, recovered through development charges and OP reserves. Of the total increase, only 150,000 of it's related to new 2025 budget impacts. And those are primarily contributions to our OP reserve to maintain funding, increasing funding for the county's clean water program, which is probably our, our primary initiative for supporting natural heritage enhancements on private property. And then our once-every-three-year funding contribution of the Children's Groundwater Festival. So, in terms of net impacts, the overall net impact on the levy is 105,000 or a 4.2% increase. And as mentioned, that's largely because of the offset in increased revenues this year. So, if you have any questions regarding anything in the community planning budget, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions from council on planning? Not seeing any. Back to Director Boogner to wrap up.
Thank you, Warden. So, looking at a summary of an outlook of the budget highlights, the investments, and we've reviewed these with you in the last couple of meetings. We have seven new initiatives to advance the strategic plan. We are making capital contributions. We are addressing affordable housing. We are doing our part to attract and retain staff. We're planning for growth. We're maintaining our service levels. We're investing in safe drinking water. We're investing in vulnerable unhoused populations. We're also improving traffic calming and road safety. We continue to invest in our asset management plan. We are looking at curbside waste collection transition. And we are committing to developing an indigenous consultation plan and a Safe and Well Oxford Plan update. In terms of the challenges and risks inherent in this year's budget, we saw growth pressures and impacts come to the top of the, of the heap of, of those challenges and risks. We're also still subject to increased WSIB claims. We're also still subject to increased WSIB claim costs, predominantly associated with our human service-related delivery, and that being Wittingford Lodge and paramedic services. We're also looking at social assistance modernization transition, as we're still moving through that process. We did talk about the shifting fiscal accountability between the three levels of government, being the federal, provincial, and then the municipal level that is the closest to the taxpayer. And we are also continue to look at long-term care funding and new information, so reporting requirements, meeting certain levels of personal care for residents, et cetera. All in, the summary base budget increase, as mentioned earlier today, 2.6% increase. The overall levy increase, 12.5% over 2024. And the increase to the average residential household translates to $137 for 2025. Again, that is not reflective of any of the budget adjustments that have been presented so far and won't be until the budget is approved. So just taking a look at some of those budget adjustments or those pending adjustments, we're still waiting to hear from Southwestern Public Health with respect to their budget for 2025. I understand it will be considered by the board later this week, so we're hopefully hearing from them early in the next week and in time for the passing of our budget on November, or December the 11th. In the draft budget, however, there is a 5% increase year-over-year for 2025. In terms of the decision points that council is going to be asked to make at their December 11th meeting, they are in the initial business plan and budget report that was circulated to council on November the 13th. They are also translated here in these slides, starting off with adopting the 2025 business plans and budgets as they've been amended throughout this process, and that council approves the 2025 general purpose levy, which will be set the date of after consideration of all the notices of motion and business adjustments, or budget adjustments, rather. And they will also approve a library levy for 2025 and the special grant funding for the Woodstock Police Services. So looking at the next slide, we'll also be looking at adopting the 2025 water and wastewater rates set out in a report that was presented to council on November the 13th. That would be effective on January 1st, 2025, and the bylaw would be brought forward in December, however, it would be effective January 1st, 2025. We'll also be asking council to adopt the budget estimate for 2025, and again, there will be a bylaw to authorize those levies. And staff will also be then authorized to proceed with implementing the incremental full-time equivalent position and compensation plan as approved in the budget. So taking a look at the budget, next budget meeting, then, as mentioned earlier, it will occur during the regular council meeting scheduled for December the 11th, starting at 9:30 a.m. Notices of motion are welcome and received, to be received by the clerk no later than December 5th at 4:30 p.m. And for the public who are monitoring and watching the budget process this year, they're encouraged to follow online at the county's website address there on the screen to access the budget package, any updates and presentations that have been brought forward to council in the meantime. I believe that ends our comments today. If there's any questions, we can entertain those now.
Any other questions from council? Counselor Mayberry and Counselor Gilvay.
Thank you, Warden. To the treasurer, one of their directors, sorry, one of the comments that's often made in the public is that the government tends to grow and that, you know, once a position's in, it stays there forever. And I got thinking about it at the last meeting and then wondering, do we ever actually show what we no longer are doing, right, or what other positions are no longer necessary? As in, we started a base budget and we add to it, and despite the fact that says that we actually reduce some services, I'm not sure that there's a clear understanding in the public. So I think it would be helpful for the public to hear what are, you know, is there any things that are no longer being done, no longer be funded, whatever. It's a case of, I don't mind telling people why they have to pay more, but it would be helpful for them to understand that it isn't always just growth, 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 that all positions are looked at and looked at as to do we actually need them for going forward, so.
Thank you. Through the Warden to Counselor Mayberry. In fact, yes, we don't, if there were actually a position that was deemed to be no longer required within our FTE complement, then certainly we would eliminate that. But quite often, what we find is our level of services changing or new programs are coming out. So as we determine that there are redundancies within our workforce, they are repurposed to another position that is required to maintain the service levels and the demand for services that are requested of us. So not often do we see them actually taken away unless, of course, a program is totally eliminated. We've seen that before, but that's rare occasion. Typically, the province gives us more to deliver as opposed to less, but yes, definitely we do repurpose positions as they become redundant or we'll, in fact, eliminate them.
Thank you. Through you, Warden, maybe just to add to that, you will note, and I think the question came up last budget meeting with regards to temporary positions and whether to utilize temporary versus a permanent position. It is also part of that aspect of using temporaries, and you'll see in the budget package that maybe the public doesn't necessarily be able to weed out is that often, you know, those temporary positions are reduced from the budget or taken out from the numbers starting the year and either re-justified or eliminated if not used in future years. So sometimes that temporary role is used for that as well.
Counselor Gilvay.
Through you, Warden. The strategic plan, like, and this is my opinion, has like a lot of big spending items. When we go through the strategic plan process, though, I mean, I think that everyone, you know, comes together and creates this plan, but there's not necessarily financials attached to it, and as we move forward, to try to deliver that plan, it is expensive. Is there, are there other ways on developing strategic plans that could be tied more to having or to giving council a better understanding of the costs of the projects moving forward? Because it seems like every year at budget, we're going, you know, we've got a bunch of new initiatives for the, to deliver the strategic plan, but I feel when you're going through that whole process, you don't necessarily have a full understanding of the costs that you're going to be facing moving forward.
Turn. Through you, Warden. And I think if we go back to the strategic plan development and working with Strategicorp, the consultant that we brought in for that, you know, there was the concept that, you know, strategic plans can be very descriptive, goal-oriented right from the start, and certainly then, you know, that probably gives a better reflection of, you know, well, here exactly task by task. That can be difficult in longer-term planning, obviously, because you might not have the long view of what is four years out in some of those circumstances. The approach we did take this time, which is, you know, obviously a different approach, is to have the strategic plan being the higher arching goals and then specifically use budget business plan time for the, if you remember, we had the discussion about the, you know, gas pedal or brake towards how fast does council want to move towards those goals. So we did actually kind of intentionally do it that way, as that was higher arching and then budget would be for the purposes of kind of speeding up or slowing down how we achieve those goals. But certainly, you know, in a future, you know, strategic plan, if council wanted to go to a more, you know, specific, goal-oriented plan, that is possible as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Martin.
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Schaefer, resolve that the information provided in the 2025 business plans and budget presentation be received and referred to the 2025 budget and business plan deliberations.
Is there any discussion? Counselor Gilvay.
Thank you, through you, Warden. It's just a comment, really. When I first came on council, I think the first budget binder was like 1,002 pages or something, and I looked at that and it was small print, and it was very much overwhelming. I just wanted to compliment staff that this is very user-friendly, very well organized, and much appreciated. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Consideration of correspondence, Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Acione. Resolve the Long Point Conservation Authority and Upper Thames River Conservation Authority 2025 draft budgets be received and referred to 2025 budget and business plan deliberations.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. No reports from departments, unfinished business. Is there no motions? Notice of motion listed, only the one. Any inquiries for staff? Counselor Mayberry.
Well, I would just comment that I noticed that Zora has already finished her budget. Congratulations to Zora. And I'm just wondering, since you want an inquiry here and not just a comment, is that a result of the excellent work of a treasurer, now CAO in Zora that was well-trained in Southwestern Oxford, or is there some other thing?
I would, thank you for the, thank you for the inquiry. I would suggest that it's a result of her excellent base-level training from Southwestern Oxford and then augmented by her subsequent years at Zora Township, but, yes, thank you. Any other serious inquiries from council? No motion going to close. Consideration of matters arising in the closed none. Bylaws, Counselor Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Petrie. Resolve that bylaw number 66812024 be given a first and second reading.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Counselor Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Petrie. Resolve that bylaw number 66812024 be given a third and final reading.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Whether, telling me who the mover and seconder is, what's the motion that you have for adjournment? Does it say November 27th or December 11th?
December 11th.
Okay, yeah. Deputy Warden Peterson.
Thank you. Moved by Peterson, seconded by Counselor Palmer. Resolve that special council meeting of November 25th, 2024 be adjourned until the next regular and special council meeting of November 27th, 2024 at 9:30.
You meant, right? Not special, just regular?
Yes, sir.
Good. Any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried, and we are adjourned.